All right, we're going to Hazelcrest regular board meeting at seven o'clock. Cleveland Belgians, trustee Ramsey.
Cleveland Belgians by 2:00 U.S. United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Grant here. Trustee Moore.
President.
Trustee Ramsey.
President.
Trustee Reyes.
Here.
Trustee Rogers here. Trustee Sleeton. President Osberry.
Here, we have four. We have prayer pass Arnold. Every head bow. For this is a day that the Lord has made, let us rejoice and be glad in it. Father God, we thank you for this, another day, a day that we have never seen before. We thank you for being the father of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. Lord, we ask that you come into this board meeting on tonight. Bless each and every individual, every household that's represented. Lord, we ask that you take the village of Hazelcrest and you place it into a position where every community would like to be like Hazelcrest. And we're asking for your divine intervention as we go forth through this meeting. Touch each and every representative, and we pray these blessings in your name. Thank God, amen.
Do you want any consideration for vote participation?
No.
Correspondents?
This correspondence is dated May 14, 2018. It reads as follows. On behalf of the senior commission, I would like to thank police chief Davis and Noble for the senior breakfast on May 12. We get an opportunity to meet other members of Noble and meet seniors from other communities. I also would want to thank the volunteer service staff. Some services on behalf of Dickers, cheers senior commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickers, appreciate that. Mayor's report, I have no report today. Man's report. Any legal? Police?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Well, one of them, Ms. Dickers just announced for me our written, so I appreciate that. We just wanted to talk about, make sure you thank the seniors for coming out. We probably had about 150 seniors there. I think we had a few people here that were in attendance, and I think everybody in attendance said it was a very good turnout. We had a real good time despite the weather. It was warm that morning, but we had a great turnout. The daddy-daughter dance was a great success. The assistant village manager came with his two beautiful young daughters, and I believe that they had a great time. They actually, we actually, we all, we both made it on the news that night, and his daughters were screaming when they saw themselves on the news. That turned out well, but it's always a very fulfilling program that we have. One of the young ladies that I personally had escort, I had two young ladies from Hazelcrest that I was assigned to me, and as they bring them into the ballroom in their gowns and everything, they have the red carpet out, they announce them, and that's where every young lady gets announced. And as we're standing next about to walk in, the young lady turns to me and she says, "I feel like I'm in a movie." So to have that seven-three young lady feel like that made everything worthwhile that we went through. So this is just a tremendous event, and we will make sure that we're participating again every year representing and bringing the young ladies from Hazelcrest down. We had cop on the rooftop this past Friday. Some people may have seen the officers on the Dunkin' Donuts roof over East Hazelcrest. That was a success. As you know, the funds that we raised from that event go towards the Special Olympics in Illinois. Illinois is the second largest fundraiser for the Special Olympics through the law enforcement in the entire world.
Wow!
This is a year-round fundraising process, and our next event is the torch run. The torch run is going to be on June the 12th. Anybody who is interested in running in the torch run, or you can ride your bike like the trustees did last year, and I did part of it too. You're more than welcome to be involved. You can just contact me to get more details on that. Attended the South Suburban Mayor's and Managers Association Awards Dinner, and I want to congratulate the mayor for being re-elected as the president for another year of the organization. The South Suburban Chiefs Association presented to the mayor and the association award for partnership that we had in a training event. So I want to thank you all for that also. We had interviews for our lateral hires. We had, we interviewed 16 people. We had a couple of people come from out of town for interviews, and we're in the process now of getting going through everything that we accumulated and coming up with a lateral list. So that, you know, hopefully will be coming up within the next couple of weeks. So that process is underway. And the final thing is, for the citizens, there are folks who have concealed carries, and I need to make sure that people understand what you can and cannot do when it comes to concealed carries. We had, two mornings ago, we had a juvenile, somebody, first of all, it is against village ordinance to have your car running and you're not in it. People come outside, they start their car off, and they go back inside, and they come back out and their cars are gone. Now, I know newer cars have systems that will lock your car and it won't allow somebody to pull off. But if you have, if you don't have that on your car, you got to be vigilant, because what happened the other morning was, we had a juvenile that came, guy warming his car, went to get the garbage from the back of the house, when he came back, guy was in his front seat. Well, this guy had concealed carry. He draws his weapon out, and the young man didn't pull off, thank God, because he, so he didn't shoot the young man, and he held him there until police officers got there. What I need for you all to understand is, just because you have concealed carry, that if you use that weapon, you still got to be lawful in how you use it. And somebody stealing your car when you're not in it is not placing your life in danger. It does not give you justification to shoot somebody if you have concealed carry. So if that guy would have shot that kid, he would have been arrested. So even though he had his weapon legally, it was not, that situation didn't warrant him using deadly force. So even though people have concealed carry, you cannot just use it under any circumstance. So just make sure that you understand that. That's all I have for my report, sir.
Thank you, chief. Especially for the great information, because, you know, a lot of people are going to jail thinking they're rightful. That's good to know. Public Works?
Just a couple items. We have been putting up American flags in some of the major thoroughfares across the village in celebration of Memorial Day. The annual water consumer report has been printed. They will be going out into residents' homes probably at the end of this week. We also will make copies available here at the village hall as well for citizens to come and take a look at that report.
Can I mention a citizen? I mentioned the interviews for the lateral hires. Part of our process is, we go, they had three interviews. One of them is an interview with me. And what I added was, I have a citizen, 30-year resident of Hazelcrest who actually sits in. So we make sure we got the community involved in this process. And the citizen who's helped me out for the last couple of times is actually here today, Mr. Arndell Ricks. He's a citizen. He's had two days worth of interviews. He donated his time and his effort, and I just want to thank him for lending his time to the vote.
I do want to say something to go along with Public Works. We know we had a lot of rainies. Rain this last month. A lot of people have not been able to cut their grass. I'm asking citizens, we get these warm days, come up to actually cut your grass. A lot of grass is getting overgrown. I also want to address the issue of village drive. I'm addressing this so people understand village drive was overgrown, the median of village drive historically. The master association homeowners was cutting their grass, I think, the last 25 years. It's an agreement that they came up with, partnering with the village to make sure that that middle median of village drive is cut. I guess this year, the master's association and some of the members decided they were not going to pay for people to do it this year after almost 20 something years of doing it. We became aware of it because the grass became very hot. They did not let the villagers know, they did not notify me or Public Works. And so I did receive a phone call saying that the middle portion of village drive was overgrown, people upset, you know, they paid high taxes over there. But the relationship we've had in the past, been going for years and years, I'm just really surprised that they would not continue their partnership and cut that median. We will do what we have to do as a village, because it is a village property, but for them just to stop, you know, and not give us any information that that was going to happen. And a lot of us who live on, don't drive down village drive all the time. And so when I became aware of it, we did reach out to Public Works. They are working on cutting the ground, because there was a lot of rain, so it was very hot. But, you know, I just hope we can sit down and find out how can we continue to partner with our home associations. And 20 something year relationship, them working together to support what we're trying to do in the village of Hazelcrest, continue to be Hazelcrest proud, let's have a conversation about that. We know everyone pays taxes. We know that everyone who lives in Hazelcrest pays taxes. Some pay more than others, based on sometime we live, what kind of home we have. But we should all be concerned about the beautification of the community. All work together to make sure that we partner to keep our community looking nice. And if a decision is made that's going to disrupt the aesthetics of our community, I would hope that someone will reach out to me or this board and have a discussion before a decision is made that actually detrimental to the viewing and look of our community. So I just want everyone to be aware of that, and I would like to also, citizens who can, please move your mind. Appreciate it. I'm sorry. Thank you for the special services. Your report, sir. Thank you. Human resources?
Thank you, Mr. President, board of trustees, Mr. Manager. Just three things, from an HR or what we're working on at least right now. As we shared during the president's meeting with the department heads, human resources will facilitate sexual harassment training and complete that for all village employees by the end of June. I'm currently working with the director of community relations on summer hires. I'm also working with the assistant village manager and director of public works on the public works seasonal hires.
Fire department?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, not last week, two weeks ago at the board meeting, the Remming Township School District had a board meeting themselves, and they recognized the fire department for educators' recognition award of the month. Says, "We are very fortunate to have someone like you supporting our students and programs at Hillcrest High School." And this was in response to a cadet program that was started in Hillcrest High School, and they gave an award out to the fire department, and they gave a plaque for the Department of Public Works. We've been trying to do this for a long time. Deputy Chief Hunter headed this whole process up. So this will be a start to teaching the youth, and youth from our community as well, how to become firefighters. So hopefully someday we may be able to get someone through this program to come and work for us at the fire department. So kudos to the firemen that helped out, and to Deputy Chief Hunter who spearheaded this program. Secondly, pancake breakfast is in two weeks. June 3rd. At least one person knows. June 3rd. I see more people than you there, though. June 3rd, all-you-can-eat pancakes. $5 donation, best deal in town.
Not only pancakes, it's pork sausage.
Chicken wings.
Plates and forks.
Any way to eat.
Milk. Milk. Juice.
And I want to thank the chief for your cadet program. If you guys have not watched the cable channel, you actually see the cadets performing, putting out fires, running about fire safety. Principals even know they would have done it on. I think it's a great program to teach young folks early about fire protection and the profession itself. It's a great profession, and I want to give kudos to you for allowing the deputy chief to continue that program. And I was very excited to see the young men and women. One guy, one young man was there was saying he wanted to be a fireman all his life, and now he wants to be one even more. So thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Our community and business relations.
Thank you, good evening. I would like to first congratulate Teddy's Meat and Food Market on their one-year celebration. They did outstanding job feeding the community, and fed over hundreds of people Saturday evening. They did a fantastic job, so I would like to congratulate them for their event that was enjoyed by all. Second, I would like to let everyone know that Representative Will Davis is having a Community Thread and Recycling Day on June 16th. They are accepting one television per household. I know a lot of people is waiting for that electronic device to be picked up, turned in, and it's going to be at 1912 West 174th Street in his district office. We are accepting applications for the summer youth jobs for 16 and up. Please come in and pick up an application at the front desk. Also, we're accepting applications for the president's summer grades program for grades seven through eight. It's a six-week program that's going to be at the Hazelcrest Family Center on Dixie Highway. Next, I would like to invite everybody to the president, I mean, the pancake representatives, the chief said, and also for the first time in honor of Father's Day, we're doing a grill day cookout. It's not a contest, it's just a picnic for the family to come out, have a father's cooking on our Father's Day, right here on the village grounds. We have a DJ and music and a lot of family fun. And since Glenn mentioned the chicken wing, don't forget our chicken wing cook-off. Hazel Nut Festival, August 3rd, 4th, and 5th, we have a parade, king and queen contest for the first time, and a three-on-three basketball and concert. So please save the date, August 3rd, 4th, and 5th for our Hazel Nut Festival Parade. That ends my report.
How do they put applications for the king and queen contest?
They could, they could go online under the official Hazelcrest, Village of Hazelcrest, online on Facebook, and they could come up and get applications, or they could call.
So online, Facebook, and they could come through.
Right, and JD has been going around to all of the schools making presentations giving out applications also.
Great, thank you. Economic Development? At this time, we have more than motion to open for public participation for items that are on the agenda to address. Can I have your motion?
Need to open your meeting to items on the agenda only?
A second. And the move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Reyes, to open the board meeting to public participation for items on the agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak to things that are on the agenda, this is the time to come for it.
Good evening, Mr. President. Trustee? I wanted to stand and rise, wanted to commend you first for doing an outstanding job at something. About a year ago, or maybe a little more than that, there was a eyesore property that had been decapitated in my community, which is Pace Center, on the corner of Knowood and Governor's Highway. After you did that, looked wonderful. It was a great improvement for the community. But now the grass hasn't been cut for the entire summer, and now it is becoming an eyesore for the community. So I would just ask that we pay attention to that.
Thank you. We're on that. Anyone else?
I'm hoping that what I need to ask about falls under informational updates, okay? I've enjoyed the meeting so far, and I'm hoping that I can get some answers on some things. You spoke about youth hiring. What are you doing about youth hiring? How many people are you hiring, and what is it you're looking to use them for?
At this point, we're hiring about 15 youth. We're working with some of the businesses in the village of Hazelcrest, where some of the youth can work with some of the different businesses. Also, some work here at the village, and some would assist the Public Works department. We have several companies throughout the village. I have, right now, I have about seven that is willing to let some of the youth work with them.
Excellent. Any of it to be cutting grass? Grass seems to be a big thing here. Okay, that sounds good. How about cleaning up the creek?
Well, they're working throughout with Public Works to continue to clean up the entirety of the village.
I'm saying some of the youth could do that, too.
Well, they're working with Public Works on the entire cleanup.
Okay. The electronics pickup, is there anything else besides the electronic pickup that's going to be, is it chemical, paint, stuff like that?
I have a list of items. I don't think it's chemicals are not on here, but electronics, all types of electronics.
Because they used to have one in Midlothian, and that really was a huge benefit to Midlothian, because people could get rid of all their old paint, all their old aerosols, gasoline, everything could all be gotten rid of.
But it was something we could look at doing.
Okay. We have a speed meter sitting back there behind the police department. I have never seen it used in the village of Hazelcrest. The village of Homewood uses two of them. The village of Homewood also has a seatbelt enforcement program. They, in fact, I just ran by it today.
So did I. Twice.
And it really works well for the police department over there. I think it's something you guys ought to look at. For nothing else, it is a revenue enhancer, okay? Because people are driving around without seatbelts on, okay? Speed on Holmes Avenue here is totally not being followed. The village, the speed limit in this, in this village is what? 20 and 25 miles an hour, am I right? Well, people going to the rec center over here, people coming to city hall, all of that, they are blowing down homes, guys, and there are children out there. We really need to look at that. I noticed that we resurfaced the street over near Jesse.
Jesse White Ice.
A mine fire now. Yes. We resurfaced it all the way down to Dixie, I believe. Any plans to resurface other streets like 172nd from Holmes to California? That's a war zone. I mean, it would seem to me that one of the things we should have in the village register is resurfacing is planned for this street, this street, and I know you can't resurface the whole place, but we can do more than one street, can't we? Okay? Lateral hiring, what is that?
Lateral hiring is are people who are already certified as police officers that will not have to go to the police academy.
Does that mean like policemen from Harvey?
Right. They could be, people who are certified in the state of Illinois. Could be, yes.
Do you think that's the best thing that we could do is hire policemen from Harvey instead of opening it up to any applicants that might fit your bill?
It's not applications from Harvey, it's for certified police officers in the state of Illinois. If they, if we, we don't discriminate against people who work for, it's just because somebody would.
No, and I don't know these people, so I'm not casting judgment. I'm just saying, I heard a rumor that we were going to hire policemen from Harvey, okay? And I'm saying.
I can't imagine where that would come, because we just did interviews a couple days ago. So how somebody would do that, I wouldn't know that.
Do we have open hiring?
Yes.
The hiring is for anybody who's certified as a policeman from anywhere in the country. As I mentioned in the report, we had people that actually came from out of state apply.
Oh, okay, okay. That's better than what I heard. Better than what I heard. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
I just want to update you. We've done over 50 streets in the last two years, did $3 million street on 183rd Street. We did Lincoln, 176th and 2nd Street. We got, and we do have streets numbered, whatever the worst street is, it gets done. And we've been doing that for the last four years. We did, I'm going to redo all the Stone Bridge area. So we're going to get to your street.
Oh, it ain't my street. It just happens to be there, you know?
We try to get the worst street first.
Okay.
So we're on that.
My comment was more along the lines of, you're looking for things to put in the villager. Putting out what the plans are to what streets would be an excellent thing to let people know.
I agree.
All right, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. We'll make sure they slow down coming down this street. I know you live there, you're watching every day. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close participation? All's in favor? Second? Move by trustee, John Rock, the second by trustee Ram. All's in favor? Okay. And then items. Trustee Grant.
Okay. Thank you, President Osberry. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 8, 2018.
And move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Moore, to approve regular meeting minutes of May 8, 2018. Any question on this? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Sleeton?
Motion carries. Trustee Moore.
Thank you, President Osberry. I motion to approve accounts payable number 19-02 dated May 22, 2018, in the amount of $778,166.22.
They move by trustee Moore, second by trustee Rogers. Approve accounts payable number 19-02 dated May 22, 2018, in the amount of $778,166.22. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Sleeton?
Motion carries. Trustee Ramsey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve Metro Agreement Number One to amend for the operation and maintenance of the community station facility, excuse me, commuter station facility in the village of Hazelcrest. Second. And move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Moore, to approve the Metro Amendment Number One to the agreement of the operating and maintenance of a commuter station facility in the village of Hazelcrest. Those of you who don't know, we're redoing the Hazelcrest station. It'll be a station with an elevator, have a, we're not sure what's going to sit in there, but some type of store that's going to be sitting there. Should be a complete makeup on both ends of the metro station. Looking to finish that in July. Any discussion on this item? Discussion, yes. Mr. Mayor, could you help us explain that the amended agreement to the operation of the. Before you ask me that. Sir? Could you give us some brief explanation on the amendment, the agreement for operation and maintenance of a commuter station facility? So we're actually doing it with the amendment.
Well, there's just some work going on change, but right now we're talking about modifying sort of the duplication agreement between the Metro and Village Board of Affairs along Park Avenue between 170th and 171st. And so this allows us to modify so that the station operation and maintenance can be addressed to include the duplication as well.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trust, trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Sleeton?
Motion carries. Trustee Reyes.
I motion to approve, to approve Hazelcrest Mobile Home Community Improvement Proposal from RB Horizons, ILHC Hazelcrest MHP. Horizons, ILHC Hazelcrest MHP LLC, and rescind any previous actions which are contrary.
Second. And move by trustee Reyes, second by trustee Ramsey, approve the Hazelcrest Mobile Home Community Improvement Proposal from R.B. Horizon, ILHC Hazelcrest MHP LLC, and rescind any previous action which are contrary. Any discussion on this item?
I might just ask clarity.
She asked for clarity for the audience.
So this is, those of you who are familiar with Hazelcrest proper, which is the eastern of town, we have a historical mobile site over there that's been there for many, many years. Many years the site has become unsightly. Many of the homes are abandoned and run down. The area over there has covered with trees from the previous owners. We have a new company that has came in and has purchased that property. They have laid out a plan to remove the vacant and unsightly homes, to rehab the homes that can be rehabbed, remove the trees we have, and beautify the area itself. And so we had an old agreement on the books that would not allow any changes or upgrades to that area. This is allowing us to allow that upgrade so that we can clear the area up and make it more livable. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton? Upset.
Motion carries. Just taking open to the public for any comment? Can I get a motion? Move to open public participation, any comment? Second. And move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Rogers, to open for floor of public comments. All's in favor?
I'd like to just lay a little bit of...
Greg. Hello, my name's Greg Washington. I reside at thirty-four twenty-five Maple Lane. There's two things. One, I want to remind people that the Open Hands is, Facebook page is up and running, and we're just asking if people can like, share photos, we want to use that as a way of, one, saying that this organization exists, and we would really like more community involvement. It's always good to have a nice open, fresh, and a nice open and safe place that people in the village can use. We will be having more programs throughout the year. And also, this is somewhat connected to, I don't know if you guys have done anything, I would also like to say rest in peace to former trustee Jesse Wakefield. She served with my father for a couple of years, and with Mayor Brown, and I just wanted to give my condolences to her family if they're watching.
Dale Ricks from the Pace Center Association. I rise this evening to ask, could we have an update on, we talked about, at several meetings, about changes that we were going to have about water? Could we have an update?
There's nothing else on that right now, but it's still standing. So, what was the only guess for this? All right.
Hey, how you doing? Paul Flores, with one-six-nine-five-nine Western Avenue. I've been here in Hazelcrest forty-four years, and I do remember saying that our water bills will be going up, and mine's, because there's only two people in my household, my average water bill's fifty, sixty dollars, it jumped up to five hundred dollars. Get to it, were that high?
You got a problem if you go for two-fifty...
No, there was no leaks, I told the villagers, there's no leaks, and they said it is what it is.
Well, that's something you need to come and talk to us about, because you go for fifty-five hundred, it didn't go up that high at all.
Okay. That's my building, that's why I had to pay.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, elected officials, administration, my name is Eldor Arnott, I'm the chairperson of the Village of Hazelcrest Clergy Commission, and I'm here to let you all know that we do exist, and that we're not here for religion, we're here for a relationship with the community. A few months ago, we had a prayer breakfast, and we had a breakout session. In that breakout session, we discovered there was a great demand for more information on domestic violence, drug use among teenagers within the village of Hazelcrest, and we have set up a robocall system within the clergy commission. We now have a robocall that we're funding. And what we would like to do is work with the, and partner with the chiefs of police, fire, and any other administration. We want to start doing revolving classes at different churches throughout the village. We're not here to be on Sundays and shut our doors on Sunday nights. We're not serving the community in that fashion. So we would like to set up something that we can work with the village and start doing domestic violence training. We want to do youth training, educational training, and I thank you, Chief Davis, for mentioning about the concealed carry. That came up and went about sessions as well. So I'm here to let you know that as a clergy representative, we're just not here as preachers, we're here as individuals who are concerned about the citizens of Hazelcrest as well as the surrounding communities, and we're asking that we're able to reach out to this board for any assistance, and we want to thank Carolyn Carter so much for her assistance in her direction with this commission, and we want to say thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close public participation?
I move that we close public participation. Second.
Move by trustee Rogers, second by trustee Ramsey. Close public participation, all's in favor? Trustee Moore?
I was just letting the citizens know that they need to go to the Chateau Park. They renovated the park, and it's beautiful. They put in nice, nice stuff out there, thanks to the, is that the AKA? It was a part of that, so the Chateau Schools Park has been renovated, and it's really nice.
I'd also like to give my condolences to the Wakefield family. They've been in the village of Hazelcrest before I even got here. Jesse Wakefield has been trustee, I think, for three terms. Very involved in the community. She was famously known for driving to Dixie. She actually kept that going over the years, and it went up and it went down. Jesse has spent a lot of time and dedication to the village of Hazelcrest. And her daughter Liz, who's also trustee, have been dedicated to this community. So I'd like to give my condolences to my family and from the board. We've known her many years, and sometimes people step down as trustee, or in public life, they just disappear. Jesse just got busier. And we want to thank her for all she's done, and thank her family for allowing her to be with our family, and our prayers are with them. Our services are, a wake is on this Friday, you can get this message from...
I'm already in Chicago Heights from two to six P.M.
Right, Chicago Heights.
Five forty, West Dixie Highway.
Curse, dash, P.A.R.
We're going to put it on our website, and we're also having it on our cable channel, and we will email it to the trustees and the staff so they can have it. So again, we want to give our condolences to the family, and God bless you and keep you. At this moment, can I get a motion to adjourn? I move that we adjourn.
A second. And move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Reyes, to adjourn. All's in favor? Aye.
Seven three five.